Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? First, I want to say thanks to everyone for coming out. Looks like we got a lot of visitors here tonight, and we like to have visitors, so we appreciate everyone coming. We call the roll, please.
Bachman.
Here.
Henning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Lieberman. And Stevens.
I'll move to excuse Mr. Lieberman.
Second.
Motion to excuse Mr. Lieberman tonight because he's on, away on his birthday present. And that was made by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Dennis is excused. So, we have a, we have a good group of folks here tonight, and I'm pretty sure most of you folks are here with the Art Club, Northmont Art Club, and we just, we're just so proud of the work that you did. And so, to say that, we wanted to publicly recognize you. So, we did something that's called a resolution of appreciation. So, what I want to do, I'm going to ask that we amend the agenda, and we're going to move these folks up to the first item on the agenda. So, that way, if you want to stay, you're welcome. We hope you will stay, but obviously, if you feel like you have to go, then that's, we fully understand.
You'll probably have to study tonight.
That's right.
(laughing).
Or go paint something, you know.
Mayor, if you could just have a voice vote on the motion to add it to the agenda and then move it up to the top of the agenda, please.
I move that we move it up to the top of the agenda.
Second.
Motion to amend the agenda by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. Can we have a voice vote, please?
Okay. Bachman?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes. So, what we'd like, uh, let's see. So, we don't do very many of these, so I'm a little bit taken aback here, but maybe we could have, if we could have all the students come up to the podium. We won't ask you to speak or anything like that, but I'd like for you to come up, just so I can read this for you and publicly tell you thanks. So, if everyone could come up and get your picture. And this is a resolution recognizing Northmont High School Art Club. The city of Clayton desired to have a mural painted at Meadowbrook at Clayton that showcased the talents of local artists. The Northmont High Schools, High School Art Club volunteered for the task and submitted drawings to City Council for consideration. The students who completed this project have not only covered a formerly nondescript, covered a formerly nondescript pump building, but have also created a destination art piece. The new mural welcomes people to Meadowbrook at Clayton, provides the community with another example of why Clayton is ranked as one of the best places to raise a family in Montgomery County, and showcases the immense talents of the students in the Northmont community. Therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Clayton, State of Ohio, the City Council on behalf of the residents of the City of Clayton, thank the Meadow, thank the Northmont High School Art Club for their completion of the Clayton mural at Meadowbrook at Clayton. That was really awkward, sorry about that.
(laughing).
But, so, so, folks, we're just so happy with it, and just, it just came out better than I think any of us expected, so. If we could just have everyone come in just a little bit closer for a picture. Anyone else wants to take a picture? You can all say, like, "Go Bolt," or something like that, right?
(laughing).
Guys, thank you so much. Everything, it just turned out so, so fantastic. We appreciate you. Well, good job, all. Thank you so much. If you do want to see yourself on television, we broadcast all of our council meetings. And Saturday at 8:30, and Monday at 10:30 PM, and then 9:00 AM on Wednesday. So, if you want to, you know, if you, of course, it'll also be on our website. So, if you want to see yourself on TV, but again, we just appreciate you so much. I'm going to, I don't know, does anyone else want to say anything to these folks?
Um, the only thing I would say is, you all submitted a lot of great ideas, and I know that staff, we, we were talking when we were going through them, and one of the ideas we had was potentially working with our neighboring communities and having some smaller pieces created for like an art trail around the Northmont community. So, I would love to see something like that happen. In the city of Clayton, in Inglewood and Union, we have some really great parks that the residents really enjoy, and I thought it would be a really neat idea to have some of your artwork staked out around the parks so students and community members could go and experience the parks here, but then also see the artwork of the students, and we could keep it rotating throughout the years as students go through the art program. So, I'd love to see that happen still, and we hope that if it does happen, you all would participate.
Well, I know I speak for everyone. We appreciate you, and we just love it. So, with that, I'm going to say, if you want to stay, you can, you're welcome to stay. We'd love for you to stay, but if you want to go, we certainly understand that, too, so.
Mayor, I'm just going to interrupt you one more time. Since that was a resolution, can we have a vote on that?
Uh, so, is there a motion to approve the resolution as written?
No written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Merkel to approve, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Yeah, like I said, we don't do very many of these, so, sorry for the delivery there. But, so, if you, is everybody staying?
(laughing).
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think so. Uh, we do appreciate you all coming, and thanks to your parents also for bringing you in. Excellent. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a public hearing on Obusby Street, and I'm going to read a one pager here for everyone. It kind of gives you how these hearings go. It's the intention of the city to vacate a specified portion of a designated 50-foot section of public right-of-way on Obusby Street located to the east of Harrington Avenue and further located between parcel ID M60-16311-0001 and parcel ID M60-16310-0019 within the city of Clayton. Since all testimony before this council is sworn testimony, all persons wishing to speak, even if you don't plan on speaking, but if you may speak, may decide to speak, I need you to stand now and raise your right hand. Is there any of you folks that plan on speaking for or against this? One more time.
(laughing).
Okay, so, we're going to skip the oath since no one's testifying. So, this is how it goes. The staff will make a presentation on the case. The, will, the, will give the council a chance to ask any questions of the staff. Then, we'll ask for a motion to open the floor for public comments, and since no one raised their hand, we won't have any public comments, okay? And then, we'll ask if there, if there are, if there were someone speaking, if there are any proponents or opponents that wish to speak, and then we'll ask for the motion, for motion to close the public comments of this hearing. And then, council will have a, an additional time to answer, to ask questions, and the motion to close the public hearing will follow. Then, it'll be over.
I'll make that motion now, Mayor, since there's no one here.
Motion to...
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing, by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
You didn't technically open it first, but you want to, you want to revise, you want to revise your motion, Mr. Gorman, to open and close? We've ever had that happen before either.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to open the public hearing on Obusby Street by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
And then, for the record, there's no one here that wants to speak, so I'll make a motion to close.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Henning to close the public hearing, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We'll, we'll move on to the clerk's report.
First, you have before you the council workshop minutes of October 20th, 2022.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve the clerk's report by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We also have before you the council meeting minutes of October 20th, 2022.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Ms. Kelly, second by Mr. Gorman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous also. We're going to move to old business, and we have, it looks like two ordinances. Both are the second readings. We heard the first readings at the last meeting, so we read the first ordinance, please.
Ordinance O-10-2232, an ordinance adopting the planning commission's recommendation to approve the application of Kareem Bion and Daniel Anoy for a change in zoning from residential single-unit district, RSD, to planned development district, PDD, and to further approve the final development plan for property located at six, excuse me, 3510 Sweet Potato Ridge bearing parcel ID number M60-03011-0030 and containing 5.704 acres within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let it show that that passed unanimously. Will you read the second ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-10-2233, an ordinance amending Section 351.06 of the Clayton Codified Ordinances entitled Commercial and Heavy Vehicle Parking Regulated.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, let that show that that was unanimous also. And we have, under new business, we have one ordinance which will be the, the ordinance that we heard, or didn't hear, tonight, but will you read that ordinance, please?
Don't we technically have to modify the agenda for the four new ordinances?
For the...
The additional four ordinances for the...
Because those were not on the original short form where they correct.
Correct.
Right, so we would need to amend the agenda, yeah, to add O-11-2235 through...
I'll move to, move, I'll move to amend the agendas.
Second.
Motion to amend the agenda to add four additional ordinances by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, will you read the, good catch. Will you read the first ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-11-2234, an ordinance vacating a specified 50-foot section of an existing public right-of-way located on Obusby Street within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
I just have a question, Mayor. Jack, uh, Jack, the bird'saws at the end of the street, or the vacation part of the street, they, the bridge they cross goes out on the dogleg road, right?
It does. The bridge they cross goes on the dogleg road, yes.
All right, and we had a report from the fire department. Can the fire department get to their house now across that bridge?
Um, I think that they probably still have the same limitations that they did before, just based on size.
Okay. But I didn't think the bridge was that big to see some of these trucks out, or, excuse me, this fire equipment out here to go across them. But, okay. I, I move for approval.
So, it was motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor? Or, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Will you read the second ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-11-2235, an ordinance to establish building permit fees and authorize the city of Clayton to enter into an agreement with National Inspection Corporation to provide related services.
Mr. Coons?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So, the next four ordinances all have to pertain to the same topic, which is the city of Clayton creating its own building department and moving forward with consulting with NIC to perform building permit reviews and inspection services for the city. As we discussed at the previous workshop, as well as in my staff report, staff does believe that this is the best opportunity for us to be as proactive and responsive to the community at large, as well as in terms of development long-term for the city of Clayton, to transition away from Montgomery County to NIC for building department services.
And we discussed this last week. Is there any other questions or comments?
Um, as stated last week, I know us on council all seemed unanimous in the support of this proactive measure, so I'll move for approval. Thank you.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. And will you read the third ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-11-2236, an ordinance to establish building department.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Will you read the fourth resol, or fourth ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-11-2237, an ordinance requesting certification to enforce the Ohio State Building Codes within the city of Clayton, Ohio.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Henning, second by Ms. Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous also. And will you read the fifth ordinance, please?
Ordinance O-11-2238, an ordinance authorizing a request to the Ohio Board of Building Standards to certify the city of Clayton for enforcement of the Residential Code of Ohio to execute, excuse me, to exercise enforcement authority and accept and approve plans and specifications and make inspections.
I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion to approve by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Bachman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and let, let the record show, that's unanimous also. And we have one resolution tonight. Will you read that?
Resolution R-11-2274, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Masterpiece Signs and Graphics Inc. doing business as Golf Graphics for the provision of T-signs at Meadowbrook at Clayton.
Elaine?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so, the Meadowbrook, uh, T-signs require considerable amount of repair and painting in the off-season. We were approached by Golf Graphics, who is utilized by other municipal golf courses in the area, um, to replace our T-signs, and we would get these at no cost. Um, and in turn, they would place advertisements on these T-signs, um, and they would be responsible for the upkeep as well, as well as obtaining those advertisers.
How long do these signs last, Elaine?
I don't quite know. They are, um, more durable because our current ones are wood, but if they do deteriorate, the, um, Golf Graphics is responsible to replace them. All we would have to do is call them.
We, we can't use these students that were here tonight to pay...
That would be fantastic. I think those would be, yes, come out a lot more creative.
I'll move for approval.
Okay.
I just have a question. So, on the advertisers, are there going to, are there yearly contracts saying maybe this advertiser one year doesn't want, wants to do it, then the next year somebody else wants to do it? So, is there a contract, a yearly or two-yearly?
Um, my understanding, uh, Golf Graphics would be the ones obtaining and entering in that, into that contract with the advertisers, but it's my understanding that it could be a year or it could be a multiple-year contract.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
No moved. I did.
Second.
Motion to approve as written by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of items for you this evening. Uh, one, I want to remind everyone that city offices will be closed next Friday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. Um, we are actually having our first Coffee with the Cop since 2019 on November 14th from 8:30 AM until 9:30 AM at Boston Stoker on Main Street. So, hopefully, everybody can come out for that. It'll be a great event. Um, and then Breakfast with Santa is Saturday, December 10th, uh, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Tickets go on sale November 14th. There are only 200 tickets being sold, and they go quickly. So, if you want those tickets, you need to get them pretty much when they go on sale, on November 14th. Um, just want to give council a heads-up that we did receive the resignation from one of our BZA members. She had some work conflicts that she wasn't able to make the meetings, so staff has begun to advertise that position. Um, it's gone on our social media, it's on our website. We sent out a press release to the newspapers, hoping that they would run that as well. And of course, as always, if council has anyone that they would like, uh, to propose for that to the body, you can absolutely do that. So, our goal is to have all of the, um, people who are interested in line by November 28th so we can get it to council by the December 1st meeting for consideration. Um, and that is all I have for you this evening.
Any questions or comments for our city manager? Okay, we're going to move on to visitors' comments. We have some visitors in the room. Anyone want to step up and make a comment? Wes, that you state your name and, oh, come on up, yeah. State your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is John Headkey. My address is 4770 Molonat Lane, Clayton, Ohio. Uh, if you're not familiar with that street, it's in the villages of North Clayton. So, I'm one of the few homeowners that actually live in that area. Probably, maybe 25 to 30 of us. Um, I would like to bring, really, I'm coming here, uh, you know, there's been some discussion within the homeowners association, several of the neighbors. Um, I assume that the council is aware that, uh, some of the property in that area has been bought by a company by the name of Windsor. Um, I'm not sure how much you've seen of the plans that they have submitted. Um, or should, I may not say submitted. They have drawn up some draft plans. Those plans have evolved over time, and they have been shared with the homeowners association, filtered out through the rest of the community. Um, I, I was, uh, let's see, when did we build? We built a home there. We moved in in 2016. We broke ground in 2015. So, I've been there for some time. One of the first people to actually build a home after the collapse of the housing market. Um, of course, when we moved in there, there was an existing kind of sketch concept, um, plan that if you go out on the website today, on City of Clayton's website, you will still see that rendering. What it shows is a mixed community of work, live, um, I can't remember what the third thing was, play. The rendering shows, uh, what I would describe as majority of the, of the property is either single-family homes or some commercial areas where there are businesses. Um, I think at one time, this, the actual government center was discussed about being there for the City of Clayton. Um, obviously, you know, the collapse of the housing market made a lot of changes. That property was eventually sold, bought by Windsor, and their, their plan is essentially to build what I would describe as a massive apartment complex in that, on that land. Um, again, I, I think it's a massive departure from what the original intent was, primarily single-family homes. Um, when you look at the residences who were there, were there apartments planned? Absolutely, there were. Uh, were there townhomes planned? Were there multifamily units? Yes, there were. Again, if you go back and look, the majority of what was going to be constructed for residences were single-family homes. So, I'm coming today expressing my concern, as well as, um, as I would describe every homeowner that I've spoken with, haven't spoken to everyone personally, but every homeowner that I've spoken with in the community has a lot of concerns about what Windsor is planning. We're very interested in what they're going to submit. My understanding is it goes to the building commission for them first to look at, and then it comes to the council for a vote. Um, we've been awaiting what their final plans have been for a while. They have made adjustments to their plan. I think originally, they submitted something, several hundred apartments, and they've reduced that slightly. But again, the main focus of what they're doing is multi-unit apartments. Massive departure from what the community is today and what the original plan was. That is the concern of, of myself and, as I said, every homeowner I've spoken to. So, I don't have anything else to say. I don't know if you have questions for me, but...
I would just say, we also received an email from John Lentz, um, and he had asked us to put that into the record, uh, and his, his address was 4754 Molonat. So, I would say he lives...
He's actually my neighbor.
Okay. So, we did get this email from him today, um, and I just got the email when I got here tonight, so I hadn't been briefed on it yet, but I hadn't seen any plans from Windsor at this point. Um, did your HOA have a discussion with them, or?
So, the HOA is, the HOA has discussions. Um, I actually have not been present for any of those. Again, I, I usually work late. It's convenient for this meeting to start at 7:30 for me. Um, so, I haven't actually participated in any of them. Um, I will say, the, the homeowners association's been fairly diligent about distributing the meeting minutes, talking about what's discussed. Um, comments that are made in the meeting, I think, are concerning to me personally. Uh, you know, I've seen things that say, well, that, you know, the density of the properties has been reduced. Um, yes, that's true, from what they originally submitted. I don't think, however, if you compare it to what the concept is that's still on Clayton's website to what Windsor is currently proposing, their latest proposal, um, the density of occupancy is much higher, in my opinion, versus what was originally planned. So, again, there, I'm, I feel like I'm pretty well-versed on what's been submitted. I haven't had a chance to talk to Windsor myself. I have other concerns about Windsor. Um, you know, they already own a property. They, they manage a commercial property in that area, uh, and they don't do a very good job of upkeep on it. If you look at the rest of the community in the common areas compared to the, the land that they own, doesn't meet the standards of the community. May, it may, may comply with city ordinances, but I've, I've lived, I'll just say, I've lived in this area almost my entire life, all but three years of my life. I've lived in the Northmont City School District, so Inglewood and now Clayton. So, I feel like I have a pretty vested interest in this community, and I'm very concerned about what Windsor is proposing. I don't think it's a very good idea.
I, I received a call from one of your citizens up there about this shape of the commercial building, and that, as a matter of fact, one of the tenants is moving out because of the condition that the building is in.
Yeah, so, again, like...
I don't know if that tenant is here or not, but, um...
She's not.
She's not?
No.
Okay, and she's also selling her house up that, up in the area for the same reason?
Um, I don't want to go into what her reasons are. I have received, you know, again, she has shared her reasons with the community. I'm, I'm trying to stick to exactly what I know, what facts I can say. Um, what I will tell you is, um... What I will tell you is, she pays, what she told us was that she pays Windsor $800 a month on top of her rent for upkeep of the building. All it takes is a quick drive by the building, and you can see that they do not keep the building up. Landscaping, there's weeds everywhere. Landscaping is horrible. And again, I drive by that building every day, and I have, it's in worse condition today than I have ever seen it. The business that's in that structure is called Ivy Court. They used to actually have a retail space there. They no longer have a retail space. They've closed their business because it's not kept up well. You can't have customers come, so what are they doing? They've moved their business to other locations. And yes, they put their house on the market this weekend and are looking to sell. So again, to the original concept, work, live, play, they lived in that area, and their place of business was there. Unfortunately, the company that owns it, that now wants to develop a massive apartment complex, doesn't do a very good job of keeping it up. It's not a very good landlord, and they've decided to relocate.
I had the opportunity to drive by there tonight before our meeting, after I got the call from the resident. And the building, all the awnings are covered with the green. I didn't get out and feel it to see if it was what it was, but it doesn't look good, you're right, and the building is not being kept up properly. I'm not a landlord tenant or anything else, but you don't have to be to see that.
Right. I mean, again, like I said, I was actually shocked to find out that they were paying money above and beyond their normal rent for have the building being kept in the condition that it was in. So yes, I can completely understand how they are distraught and ready to leave.
Well, thank you for being here.
Certainly.
We appreciate your input, and we all received a copy of Mr. Lentz's email, and that is gonna be submitted as part of the public record. So I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but be assured that it is as part of this meeting here, official record, so.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comments from visitors? Earl, anything?
Earl Hardymont, I'm your Parks Director. I live at 6420 Levon Court. I want to thank Jack for setting up the Punkins. We had a wonderful time. And I want to thank everybody on council for working as hard as you did and diligently you done. Excellent job. All comments from the kids was very, very favorable. Lot of kids cutting and picking the guts out of Punkins and all that good stuff. It was just a great time, and I enjoyed it very much. Jack and Elaine, great jobs. And I'd like to wish my daughter a happy birthday today. So, happy birthday, kid. That's it.
Thank you, sir. We give you folks, anything else? Okay. We appreciate everyone coming in. So we'll move to the council comments. We'll start with the birthday girl.
You put me on the spot, right? I just want to say, we did receive a Dayton Business Journal, a copy of the articles of the month, and I just want to say, it forecasted Clayton like I've never seen. I've been on council for several years now, but I've never seen a forecast like that. Jack, congratulations to you and your staff. There was a quote in there that if anyone's interested in having a business in Clayton, to come see him and talk to him. To be honest, Jack, you just don't talk the talk. You walk the walk. And you do try your very best to get tenants and to get new businesses into Clayton. I so appreciate it. It is a great, great forecast for Clayton. Keep it going. Thank you.
Mr. Merkel?
First, happy birthday. Yes, Jack, congratulations. Great article. Keep up the work. I mean, that's the thing that puts the city at the forefront in terms of the things we need to get accomplished. The questions, concerns about Windsor and the village of North Clayton. We've not received any information in terms of what proposals are being presented, because that has to go through Jack before it even comes to us. So before we even get involved in trying to have any impact on things, it has to go through the proper channels. So that's one reason why you probably don't hear a lot of comments coming from the council about what's happening. So once it goes through Jack and it gets handled through the appropriate channels for approval, that's when it comes to council, we have a chance to comment on it. And I know that Jack is going to run shotgun on this and ensure that the proper things are handled and things are addressed. And there's concerns about exterior building maintenance, that's something that the zoning people should be taking a look at, or the homeowners association, if they have it within their coding, that they should be addressing and making sure that people are held accountable. There should be no reason why something should become second-rate, and people should be vacating the space because a landlord isn't maintaining the buildings. I find that highly unacceptable. And it's not a standard that we want to have in our charge as far as how we view our city and how we run things. So let things run through the channel. If you've got questions regarding what's happening with, you know, Windsor and all, you know, address it to Amanda, so she can be involved, and she and Jack can be discussing what's happening. So don't be silent. If there's concerns, make sure your voice is heard.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gorman?
Yes, I'd like to thank Jack and Elaine for carvings and costumes and carvings. Thank you, yes. It was very well done, and the articles in the paper today were well-done too, and thanks for that also. And I think this is a problem that we need to look into up there. I talked to Amanda, and she said that Daryl would probably go up and take a look at it and see what we can do from there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Henning?
I just wanted to thank and congratulate staff. Great job, Jack. I know you've been busy this fall. We had Sweep Clayton Clean on October 22nd. That was very well-attended. I spent a little bit of time out there in the morning with the mayor and Mr. Gorman, and it's just amazing to see how much stuff residents have and dispose of at the Sweep Clayton Clean event. So something that we do twice a year, and it is very much appreciated from residents. Wanted to thank you for the costume and carving event. Super well-attended. Halloween was a very nice time in my neighborhood, just across the street here from the government center. We saw a lot of kids out. Definitely looked like a Halloween from prior to 2020. Lots of kids out, even in, a little bit of rain, it didn't stop them. And with now Halloween having been past us, I would say, as we're preparing for Thanksgiving, as I stated at the last meeting, Northmont Fish is accepting donations for non-perishable food items to go with their meal kits for families in need. So if you're interested, you can Google Northmont Fish and see what all they are looking for for goods for the upcoming holiday season, and anything you can give is appreciated. And I wanted to thank the students for painting that mural on the building. It looks fantastic. I haven't had a chance to go see it yet, but after Tuesday, when I have some free time, I'm gonna go check it out. And that brings me to my final reminder. Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th. If you haven't voted yet, you have tomorrow, you're able to vote 8:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Saturday, you can vote 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Sunday, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., and Monday, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., all at the County Administration Building. And of course, you can vote at your polling locations here in the city of Clayton on Election Day from 6:30 a.m. until 7:30 p.m. Please get out and vote. Early voting has been going very smooth. The Board of Elections teams has been doing a great job in getting voters processed, and the lines aren't long. So I hope you all participate, and we look forward to our next meeting in November. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bachman?
Evening, everyone. Don't have much. I'll just first echo what everyone said here about, you know, what was in the Dayton Business Journal. And Jack, congratulations to you on your award. Very well-deserved. Other than that, I guess just happy birthday to Tina, also Dennis, who's not here. His birthday was yesterday, so happy birthday to fellow council members.
Mayor, I have one more thing.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I would just like to thank all the veterans for their service and wish them a happy Memorial Day come next Friday.
So I'm not gonna reiterate what everyone said. Happy birthday to both of our council members, and thanks, you know, for the great event. Congratulations to our staff, you know, for the article in the Business Journal. I just want to say heartfelt thanks to all of our staff and all of our council members, everybody that works here for the city. Real proud of the work that we do every day to try to keep the city going forward. And it's, sometimes it's smooth and sometimes it's not. Sometimes it's quick, and sometimes it takes 20 years. But we keep fighting the fight, and I think you have the folks in this room and many others that really put the work in every day, and I appreciate that, and I'm real proud of all of us, so.
Mayor, I'll pull Mr. Gorman real quick and say one more thing. I wanted to thank staff real quick just for also getting some community partners at the different events. I know that at the open house, we had the sheriff's office, so residents really appreciated that, so nice thinking on that.
Okay, is there anything for the good of the order?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we are adjourned.